Call me the order.
Good evening, we will be doing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, roll call.
Madam, you want me to do the roll call or should?
Madam.
I have Chair Camerlo Okwendo with an excused absence. I have Vice Chair Maria Theresa Carney.
Here.
Present. Member Philip Lantry.
Present.
Member Jeff Rivera. I have as an unexcused absence, member Don Grigsby.
Present.
Member Nanette Douglas.
Here.
Member Russell Alexander.
Present.
Madam Chair, there is a quorum, and all five of the commissioners this evening will be full-voting commissioners for tonight's cases.
Great. Alright, new business. We're gonna call one, two.
Do the minutes.
I'm sorry?
Approval of the minutes from last meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the minutes are from October 17th of this year, at the last meeting. That's on your agenda, if you can see that.
Can somebody bring it to the table, please, too?
I move to accept the minutes from the October meeting.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Somebody like to make a motion?
I just did.
Ms. Grigsby did, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have spoken to the city, and we are gonna do ordinance 2023-63, 2023-64, and 2023-55 altogether.
Just for clarification, yes, Madam Chair, the ordinances are 2023-53, 2023-54, and 2023-55. And I think, as we discussed with staff, staff will make the presentation of all these items, which the commission will hear from the applicant, and any public comment as to any of the items. And then, once the public discussion is over, the commission will deliberate, and then take action individually or independently on each of the items separately of those three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
There we are. Good evening, I'm Francine Sutton with Community Development, and I'll be presenting the case before you this evening, or cases. Annexation 230004, CPA 230006, and ZMA 230007 for a property known as Belatera that's located on south of Kissimmee Park Road, east of Lake Toho, west of the Florida's Turnpike. That's approximately 655.86 acres, more or less. And the applicant's request is approval of ordinances 2023-53 for this annexation, approval of 2023-54 for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and approval of ordinance 2023-55 for the zoning map amendment. And staff also recommends approval. So just background on this property, the proposed future land use for this property is mixed use, and the proposed zoning is mixed use. And the development is compatible with the surrounding area and consistent with the existing entitlements. And just a little bit of background for this property, it's currently located in unincorporated Osceola County, and it's located within the East Lake Toho element of the Comprehensive Plan. And Belatera is located within the joint planning area boundary and is contiguous to the city limits. Right to the east of it is the development known as Edgewater. And with the annexation request, it meets the requirements of Florida Statute 171.044. And per Policy 4.1 of the Comprehensive Plan, mixed-use development is characterized by a mix of housing types and a network of interconnected streets that promotes pedestrian activity. And this request before you this evening is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, future land use policies, and the mixed-use development standards, and the East Lake Toho element. And the requested zoning designation of mixed use is consistent with the mixed-use future land use. And for context, it's also mixed use in the county. And in the county, it has several development approval applications, which includes a concept plan, a preliminary subdivision plan, a habitat management and conservation plan, and it also has an approved community development district. And for context, here's a image of the current future land use map that shows the darker blue, which is in unincorporated Osceola County. And the pink to the east of the property is the mixed-use area that's in the city of St. Cloud city limits. And then, to the right is the zoning map, which depicts the mixed-use zoning that's in the county. And to the right, the east, the pink mixed-use zoning that's already in the city limits, which is known as Edgewater. And just a little bit about the project, the proposed development will be developed in five phases, and it has a variety of product types, which is multifamily, that's 22 by 100 rear-loaded attached units, single-family residential rear-loaded units, 34 by 100 single-family units rear-loaded detached. And you have an apartment site, and there's a proposed 20-acre school site, there's two neighborhood centers. And there's also a multi-purpose trail and pedestrian path. In the image you see here before you, this is the approved preliminary subdivision plan that was approved in Osceola County as PS 21-00027. And strategic plan goal, this proposed project meets the planned goal of growth management, which is to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations. And on October 25th, '23, staff and DRC recommended approval. And the requested action for the planning commission this evening is to approve this items. So staff is available for any questions, but again, staff recommends approval of ordinance 2023-53 for annex 230004, approval of ordinance 2023-54 for CPA 23-0006, and approval of ordinance number 2023-55 for ZMA 230007, a lot of zeros. And I believe the agent is here, if there's any questions.
Okay, I have a question for you before you leave the podium. It said in here that you sent notices out to residents within 500 feet
Correct.
of the proposed development. Is there a list of residents? I noticed that one of the cases that we have later has a list of the people that it was sent to. Was there a list for this one as well?
It's on, well, we have it, but it wasn't included as an exhibit.
The reason I'm asking is because, seeing as this is unincorporated Osceola County, and there's not a lot of residences in this area, I don't know that 500 feet is really all that far. And I know that the City Council has had several discussions about extending that in certain circumstances. I'm just curious, how many, do you know how many people this went out to?
I can, I can take a look at the mailing list and provide that information to you, but at this time, it was only one person that called regarding these application types.
Okay. That's all I have for you right now.
Thank you.
This was agriculture, right?
Mixed use.
It was and always is?
It's currently mixed use in the county. It has, it already has mixed-use, future land use, and zoning. And probably before that, it probably was ag, I'm not sure how long ago. But it already has mixed-use, future land use, and zoning in the county. And per our Comprehensive Plan, mixed use is the only compatible future land use category and zoning category for this. So it's already mixed use in the county.
Okay. And so, yeah, I do want to echo the sentiment about 500 feet. That's probably why only one person did, because maybe there was only one person, it'd be 500 feet. I drive out there all the time, so that would be kind of disappointing to me that it wasn't sent to more people in that area. Was there a transportation study done on that area?
Yes, the seats analysis, oh, excuse me, oh, time twisted. The seats analysis, and they entered into a transportation collaboration agreement with the county. So at the time of the subdivision construction plans, they'll be required to do a traffic study to show the impacts of Kissimmee Park Road and, I think, to the north, that intersection as well. So there will be a...
So it'll be after it was approved, then they'll do a study, right? Is that how it always works?
Well, actually, this project has already been approved in the county. So it already, that subdivision plan that you viewed, it's already has its approved entitlements in the county. So when it comes into the city, when it submits its construction plans, then it would do a traffic study. But it already has been undergoing traffic studies.
Okay. Our primary goal then here today is annexing into the city, so what burden does that put on our services from the city?
So at the time of the construction plans, that's when we'll get the traffic impact analysis to see the additional improvements that may be needed to Kissimmee Park Road. And then, also, in terms of growth, there may be, you know, again, more residential units in that area. But with this request, it's contiguous to the city limits. And since it's touching the city limits, for them to develop, they have to annex into the city limits.
And is there any commercial anything within there? And I do not know how that works, so forgive me, but is there anything of stores or anything that are going to be among that thousand some odd homes on that area?
I'm sorry, they are proposing two neighborhood centers, and they didn't say what exactly is going in there. So within neighborhood centers, there could be a commercial component in there, but they didn't really identify what exactly they're doing in the neighborhood center, since it's just, the PSP was just conceptual in nature, but pretty much, they did identify that there were two of them.
Alright. So I would just say that that would be something I would want to know, because that's why we have so much traffic around, is because everybody goes to the same places. Tons of houses over here and there. So that would be something very important to me.
Member Grigsby, I noticed that it says, I don't know what page this is, it doesn't have a page number, but it has the letterhead on it. And it says, under Belatera build-out estimate for maximum density and intensity, it says, "Two neighborhood centers are proposed consisting of 9.91 acres in total and will not include commercial square footage." So my understanding from this is that they are not proposing to have any commercial, which makes me question, how is it mixed use? I mean, I understand that they're proposing mixed use in the sense of different types of residential, different densities. But I don't really understand how that's considered mixed use.
I can answer that question. So when you think of the traditional definition of a mixed-use district in Osceola County, in city of St. Cloud, mixed use deals with place types. And those place types dictates the type of uses you can do. And when I spoke about the East Lake Toho future land use area that's in the Comprehensive Plan, that conceptual master plan for the entire East Lake Toho area locked in essentially the place types, and those dictated what type of uses there. And I believe with the neighborhood centers, Belatera proposed, I'm not certain, since they didn't call out specifically what's a neighborhood center, I'm assuming it's some recreational-type uses that are ancillary to the residential developments. But within this mixed-use development, they have like civic, which is the school, then they have some open space areas. They have a school, you know, like I mentioned, the school site, and then they have like a mix of the product types. And then, to the east of them, the Edgewater development, it has the same thing, residential with the different place types as well. So essentially, mixed use, I know as it sounds. It basically...
It sounds good, but in reality, it's not good.
It's pretty much a conceptual master plan. It's not like a mix of uses where you would get residential over commercial. It could have those components, but from the Comprehensive Plan perspective, mixed use is a conceptual master plan of an area that's, I can't even tell you the amount of acres, that was approved in the county under their conceptual master plan. And the city adopted those policies from the county.
Yeah, and I completely understand the intent there, but the problem is that these developers keep coming in and only building houses. They're not building commercial, they're not building parks, they're not building... I mean, I saw in here, they had, I think it was a 20-acre plat that they were planning for a school.
Yes, it's a 20-acre.
A future K-8 school. But other than that, I'm trying to figure out what places are people gonna go? I mean, is this... And also, I want to read from their document here where it says, it's describing mixed use, and it says, "Distributed on a well-connected street system, supporting the needs of all users, offering multiple routes to destinations, and reducing reliance on arterial roadways, and where the majority of the housing is within a reasonable walking distance of a neighborhood center." So what is in this neighborhood center, or what would be proposed? Because if there's no commercial, and there's no parks, you know, what are we talking about here? I mean, and then, reducing reliance on arterial roadways, my knowledge, to my knowledge, there's only one arterial roadway into that area, and that's Kissimmee Park Road. I don't see any, I don't see any plans in this conceptual plan to connect to Friars Cove or Clay Whaley, or what's the other one?
Cross Prairie.
Parkway?
Cross Prairie.
So my biggest concern with this is just the same thing as Edgewater. We keep adding all these houses, and all this density, and all these people, but there's no connectivity. There might be connectivity within that mixed-use district, right? Which is what everybody's, you know, putting their housing on and everything. But in reality, there's only one way in and one way out. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, council, oh, commissioners, sorry. Jack Marie Segura, Community Development Deputy Director. So the mixed use is Lake Toho. You have to look at it as a big picture of the entire mixed use. And it's kind of like a puzzle. Each, we got multiple owners that own multiple land throughout those thousands and thousands and thousands of acres. What the mixed use and the Toho element does is that designate areas of how we're gonna develop this big, big area. As people come in, they do a conceptual plan. And it all connects with the previous, all of the other conceptual plans that are in the area. As Francine mentioned, in regards to the transportation, this developer is part of the seed study. That is studying all of the contributions and improvements that they're going to do for the framework streets, which are going to be connected to Cross Prairie Parkway, Kissimmee, and Friars Cove. So there's a study right now that there is mitigating that contribution, and what is going to be developed, and when it's gonna be developed. In regards to the neighborhood centers, as Francine mentioned, the neighborhood centers can be civic, can be commercial, can be recreational. In this case, we have a big community center already designated in Edgewater that is going to be connecting with the Turnpike. All of the big commercial component of that mixed use that is going to be strictly commercial is going to be located in this area. And there's going to be other isolated smaller centers that are going to be neighborhoods, which they could be the civic, which could be a police station, it could be a fire station, it could be a library, it could be a park. In this case, the two dots, red dots, that you see in this community are the designated centers. Those are going to require a separate process, which is a site development plan process. And they're going to tell us what are they're going to be, if it's gonna be amenities, if it's going to be a park, if it's going to be a, however they want to utilize that center. But that's the reason why there is no commercial component in this portion of the puzzle. Because the portion of the puzzle that contains that commercial is to the north with Edgewater. And eventually, I don't know if you had the opportunity, and we can share this presentation with you. Recently, the Osceola County Transportation Team was in front of City Council doing a presentation about all of the future connectivities, roads that are going to be built throughout all of this east, uh, east, they lo, lake take?
Lake Toho.
Lake Toho, sorry, Lake Toho element. And it's all gonna be connected piece by piece by piece. But right now, what is in front of you is just one piece of that big puzzle. That, because we're dealing with different developers, we're dealing with different owners, and everyone has their vision of how they want to, you know, develop their land. But that's why we have these big concept plans already designated. They have entitlements, as long as they don't exceed those entitlements, we review accordingly. And then, those individuals, they come in for subdivision plans, we review that they're not exceeding those allocations that are already being distributed. I hope that answers your question.
It does, but I guess where my frustration always comes in is, how do we assure that the cart doesn't come before the horse? Because we hear that, the transportation, and they're all coming, but the next thing you know, the houses will be built, and then the roadways will be trying to catch up with that. And we know that the county, for years and years and years, has let the builders go, and they, you know, or whatever, didn't build those. So now, we're in the mess that we're in. How do we assure that we don't keep doing that? And I think that's just where, out of ignorance, is that we see this going, oh, okay, we're saying yes again to another development of houses, but we don't know what you all know. So perhaps sometimes it can, maybe at the very beginning, it would be, please remember that there was something here, because we don't deal with it as often as you all do, that there is something there. But that is, we sat here in this room with the presentation and said that the reason we have so much trouble in our town is because there's one Home Depot down here, and everybody from all of Harmony, and everybody goes to that Home Depot, and that we need more commercial. So that's the only thing that I think worries us, and probably when the folks out there hear that, oh, yeah, there's another annexation, and there's another building going on, they get frustrated because they don't also know, I guess, as much as you do.
Yeah, and that's what the seed study is part of what they're identifying. It's taking all of these big chunks of the East Lake Toho element, or concept plan, as you said. And this getting, and all of the developers are on the table. And they're doing the studies, and then, as they go, they are responsible for a portion. And they're responsible of building, in some cases, sections that are greater than what there is their own responsibility. And those are the ones that we, the county and the city mitigate, and with credits and mobility fundings. But that's what the seed study's doing, is dividing that pie to make sure that, as you said, the car doesn't come before the road. In that way, as they, as Edgewater is building, is building the infrastructure that is going to connect to Belatera, that then Belatera is gonna build the infrastructure that is gonna connect with Fontana.
And that's what we can count on our, you all and our officials, to make sure that that does happen before there's a thousand houses and one road in and out Kissimmee Park.
That's correct. And we learn from our mistakes, or from previous decisions. And now, those things are being tried to be rectified.
Well, it's a shame, and I will say this in front of everybody, that we're putting our fire department, and police department, and EMSs, and everybody out there, because I've been on the road on 192 near there. And I even saw a fire truck have to go through the medium to get to the rig that was four blocks away. We were solid, packed solid, four lanes, there was no way out. I mean, and it gets worse. They had one in the corner of my house, a policeman in a brand-new SUV with a dog in it. He got hit. No.
And part of all... And part of all of this, when we do all of this reviews, the police department and the fire department, they are part of the decisions that are being made as well. And they also make the recommendations, if something is ready to be annexed, or if it's needed to be annexed. In some cases, they're traveling far away because there are other pieces that are not already annexed into the city, which makes them more difficult for them to assist or to service those areas. So as we keep adding land and reducing those gaps, then the facilities can be built, and then they can have their response.
So here's my concern. We had this same exact conversation six months ago about Edgewater. It may have been longer than that. And I haven't seen any new roads, but when you go out there, there's thousands, there's tons of houses. Maybe not a thousand yet, but there's a lot. And so, how long or how many houses are we gonna build? And how much strain can we allow these developers to put on our services? You know, the police and fire and whatnot, before we actually get a road built out there? I mean, that's the ultimate question, is how much strain can we put on our infrastructure before, you know, something changes?
Yeah, and I mean, and that's a fair question. I am not the developer, I am not a transportation engineer, but...
And I understand it's difficult too, because you guys can't force the private sector to do things, right?
If I could, members of the commission, don't lose sight of the fact that, you know, tonight, it's big, big picture. These are big-picture items. Annexation is your first item coming into the city.
Yeah, well, I understand it's big picture, I'm just...
Well, it is. And obviously, the applicant and the city community has the right to comment on that, but your land development code, your staff report, the 16 items that are your guideposts, those are the big-picture items that you want to drill into. If you get too far out over the skis, as they say, on the specifics of exactly what things are gonna look like, it's gonna be difficult to move through any agenda, whether it's tonight or...
Hundred percent, but no disrespect intended. It's the 16 items that one set of eyes says it doesn't conflict, and then there's other set of eyes that feel like it does. So with Representative Lantry's point, and my point, is just that. And it's just what I said, and I mean, I respect what we do, but when we say, yes, okay, annex, that means we're given that okay, and the houses. But I think we have another statement that might help us.
Yes, hi, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. So I just wanted to back up a little bit, and I don't know if you guys attended the workshop. We did a whole fiscal analysis on this area of east of Lake Toho for our City Council, and we workshopped it with them. We had a whole presentation on how the fiscal impacts in this area will help pay for the needed fire stations, and police officers, and roadway improvements. So unfortunately, we understand your concern, but the way things work is it's the impact fees that pay for those fire stations and pay for the roads in the future. And so, the thing that you might want to consider is, whether or not we annex it, they've been approved to build this. So do we want the impact fees, or do we want to give those impact fees to the county?
Well, let me stop you there real quick. Do the impact fees that we're getting, do they actually pay one-for-one what the needs that these homes have? Because if they don't, then we're going in the negative.
Right. I can provide you guys that presentation and the study, but the study with the impact fees and the tax revenue that will be generated was more than it would cost. So it would help us make up in other areas.
So once again, though, we have to build it all, and then we'll try to catch up and get the roads and things built.
You do it as you receive it, right? You have to have the money in order to pay for it, right? Just like any other household, any other budget, you have to have money to pay for services. You have to have the money to pay for the infrastructure. So we're either, and I'm not finance, so I don't want to speak for them, but you know, you either have to have tax base, or you know, tax income, or you have to have impact fees to pay for these services. And the impact analysis that, or sorry, the fiscal impact analysis that we had a consultant do for us, for the city, demonstrated that this area should be our number-one area to consider for annexation, because it will bring in the most money in the long run for the city.
And I agree with all that. My biggest concern with this area is just connectivity. Because it's landlocked, well, it's locked on one side by the Turnpike, and it's locked on the other side by Lake Toho.
Right. So I would say to you again, one, that's the wonderful thing about mixed-use districts, is that it's all pre-planned. So we can see on paper, before we even annex it, where those roadways are gonna go. You don't get that outside of mixed-use districts. You annex, and then we figure it out after the fact. In these specific mixed-use districts, you can look at a map that the county has already approved. You can look at a map that we have agreed to accept already, and see exactly where those roadways are going to go. And if that just means we haven't been doing a great job of educating you guys, then I apologize for that, but there is a whole plan for that.
Is that, is that county that has to fund those roads, or city if it gets annexed?
It's a joint venture with the city and the county and the developers.
But I think to just echo your one comment, to make sure everybody hears and, and understands that the county, the county does what the county does, and the county approves it. If we don't annex it, we don't get the money for St. Cloud, and we need the money for St. Cloud, so.
And we still have the impacts, right.
I'm not opposed to annexation.
Right, we still have the impacts without the impact fees.
Yep, thank you.
I'm sorry, one, one question, though. The, the impacts, if we were not to annex it, and this would be, would stay county, what impacts, I mean, I understand that the emergency services have an agreement, you know, where if the county can't get there, the city, is, is that the type of impact that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you.
And is the emergency services, pardon me, on, on Canoe Creek Road right off that, is that city or?
That's city, yeah, you're talking about Station 32.
Thank you for knowing that, I didn't know it was Station 32, but yes, that must be the one.
Is that what you're talking about?
Canoe Creek, and, and right, right as you get onto Kissimmee Park, right by the turnpike entrance. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
And how can we, how can we get invited to the meeting that you said that you put on?
We were.
We were?
Madam Chair, I think the applicant is, or representative of the applicant is here. So you may wish to hear from the applicant.
Would you like to come up, sir?
Don't get scared.
Good evening, everyone, appreciate your time. I'm Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm on behalf of the property owner. Just wanted to thank your staff for going through the presentation they did and understand a lot of the questions. I think they did a great job answering them. It'd be very similar to how I would answer them, to be honest with you, but we're happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Do you know why there was no commercial proposed for the neighborhood centers in the conceptual master plan for this?
You know, part of the answer to that question is, kind of goes back in history of the fact that this plan was approved in the county some years ago. I think, and I think also the points were well made. I think that Dag Marie made is, when you kind of really look at 10,000 feet, where there's other commercial being provided, I think she mentioned in, in Edgewater. So in, in the case of our project, and you can see it a little bit on the map there, there's a couple, I believe, like five-acre neighborhood centers, which, which she accurately mentioned when we come in with a, with a site plan, that those details would be provided then, but they're more in the nature of like civic and recreational uses for, for the community. There's also some kind of pocket parks, excuse me, that are kind of spread around the community. But yeah, there just wasn't a focus on commercial when the entitlements went through. And I think part of that is just that it's being provided in the area, although not immediately within this development.
So maybe it could just be something you can bring up to your clients, that it would be very helpful, since there is a big change. Many, many years ago, there wasn't as many cars on the road as there is now. But to have stores or possibly anything in that community could make a big difference.
Your point is like just cutting down on driving around to, if there's only one destination point. I, I understand what you're talking about.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
I don't think you can change it tonight, can you?
Yeah, appreciate it, well noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So what was the, on November 15th, 2021, is when the Board of Commissioners approved a preliminary subdivision plan with special conditions. What were the special conditions?
I think that's just the typical statement that they have, that's like some stock conditions that go along with it. I don't have them in front of me, but I think they've all been incorporated into what, I think essentially it matches up with your mixed-use standards. My understanding is there's a, there's a compatibility, it lines up with your mixed-use standards as well. So I, I'm not aware of any additional, I, I think it's just the elements that are on the plan. Like, I'll just give you an example. One was the, what came up in passing here a little bit on the 20-acre school site, which we are providing, and that, we've got an agreement in place with the school district on that. So there was, for example, before, that was approved prior to the agreement with the school district. So at the time that plan was approved, just as one example, it showed that it could be townhomes, but then ultimately, the school district, for example, did want the school site, so we've gone through that process with them. So just, that's just one example.
Is it incorrect to ask, do you live in this county?
I live in Orange County, ma'am.
You live in Orange County? Okay, you answered my question. So you don't know about this traffic? You don't write this?
Oh, I come out here, I mean, I do projects out here, I'm familiar. I know there's traffic challenges, I know there's traffic challenges, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, to answer your question, Mr. Alexander, the approval letter for the preliminary subdivision plan, it had about 18 conditions, and pretty much what that means is that the condition listed on this approval letter would be reviewed against with the construction plans.
Madam Chair, I was just going to suggest to open up the floor for public comment. If anyone wants to come up to the podium to make comments, and if they do, state your name and address, and there is a form to fill out to give to our clerk when you're, when you're done.
Anybody coming up from the audience?
Doesn't appear so, so you can close the public comment and undertake discussion, or?
Any other discussions from us?
Close public comment.
You have to,
Close public comment.
You have to close the public discussion, then deliberate and or take a motion. And remember, you're taking a motion, one for each item. Yes, please, so that the record's very clear.
Okay, we're closing the comments for the audience. Anybody else? No? Being closed. Okay, the three cases will be, to be voted on by us. Ordinance number?
Oh, are we gonna?
I'd like to.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do some discussion first, that's okay.
No, it's okay. Any discussion from the board?
Part eight of the, of the 16 findings. "A proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety." Is there any promise that the roads get built? Because if not, then it fails based on finding eight.
Well, I, I think I, I agree with your statement to the point that until we are confident that there won't be an effect to public safety, or it will not increase traffic congestion, I don't feel comfortable approving it. And I understand this is an early phase, and same thing with Edgewater, and it's, and it's, you know, it's a lot of pieces of a puzzle. But as the puzzle's being built, you know, there's pieces, crucial pieces that are missing.
That's, that's what I mean. Where are the guarantees that the other parts happen like they're supposed to happen?
Well, one, you have to trust the staff. Two, you have to understand that it's going to be built anyway, because the county has already said yes. So us saying no to annexation just means we're not supporting the necessity of getting the impact fees, which I think we need. So that would be why, I mean, there is no guarantee. Nothing's guaranteed in, in life, except that we know that they've just spent time telling us that it's part of a bigger plan, that there was a transportation presentation, and that there is an expectation for it to be done, so.
But then throughout years, we've always been told that there's a transportation plan, and none of them come to fruition.
Maybe there's a new sheriff in town, and they're going to oversee it.
If I may interject, there are development agreements already in place where they have already committed to building these roads. That's the wonderful thing about mixed-use districts, is we require those agreements and those roadways, as you see on paper. They agree to it before we ever bring it before you.
Right, the, the roads that interconnect the neighborhood, but not the arterial roads.
Oh, no, they agree to build those as well.
So what's the timeline on the connection to Friars Cove, or the connection to Cross Prairie Parkway?
I haven't memorized every detail of those agreements. I don't know, Dave, if you want to interject and speak on that.
Because that's, that's my biggest concern with this. Edgewater, this whole, this whole area is that we, we're not connecting. You know, if we had two or three routes in and out, I would feel a lot more comfortable approving this.
Oh, it's definitely connected in, with more than one way in and one way out. Unfortunately, we don't have a map that we can throw up there in front of you.
Well, because I did attend the, the transportation update, and as far as I know, Cross Prairie was not on that. Or if it was, it was something like 2028 or something.
We'll, we'll try, oh, yeah, it, it's not going to happen today, you know, it does take time.
But these houses are going to be built in like a year, or two years.
Yes, so those impact fees that those homes pay, that's part of,
But then we have to, we have to survive for two or three years without this interconnectivity.
But remember, we will.
Sounds like, sounds like data is coming.
They're building, so we will.
Exactly.
So it's, it sounds like maybe at the next meeting, we can do a, an item.
Just state your, just state your name and title.
I'm Dave Tomek, with the City Manager's Office. So it sounds like, at the next meeting, maybe we can go over with y'all the whole transportation plan for this area, the different agreements that are in place and are being negotiated. So to show you how the roads connect east to west and north to south. Typically, for developments like this one, the main roads would be built prior to the end of the first phase. And so basically, the arterials that serve this particular development will be built with the construction of the project. Because mainly because they're not going to be able to have access to their own development unless they do. But literally, there's agreements to get the entire arterial system all the way down to south.
Southport?
Southport, thank you. And then also, there's connections across the turnpike bridges in different locations to get you east-west. And then there's also some interchanges planned off the turnpike further south in the city. So we can, we can get you a nice, as long or as short as you'd like, presentation to kind of take you through that, if that would, would help you.
Well, I think explaining this information to the general public, to the citizens of St. Cloud, is more important, or at, you know, as important, so that they know that we're voting on things, you know, that are not just something that's isolated, that's going to create an isolated district, and, you know, the,
And, and, and as well, to that point, the fire stations are planned already with different agreements, like we're doing an agreement right now with Roan Bridge. They actually reserve property for the locations where the fire chief feels that a future station would be needed, so that we've got the locations already set, so that they tie in with the road network and everything. Same way with your sanitation department, same way with your police department. This whole area on this side of the turnpike has actually been planned in detail, so that as the different developments come into place, we actually have the facilities to serve those areas. And, and I recognize in the past, you know, we haven't been that responsive. The whole idea of this mixed-use district is so that we can plan those facilities timely. You talked about Cross Prairie Parkway. The next big piece of that is crossing the canal. We've got the new interchange at Nolte coming into place. We should have Cross Prairie Parkway connecting to that interchange from the, I guess you call that north.
Yep.
And then, and then connecting it to where Kissimmee Park Road used to come in at the interchange, and then take it all the way south to Friars Cove. So those things are actually in place. We can actually show that to y'all. I'm trying to think of how else to get it to the public. We had the, we had the overview a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, the transportation update, yeah.
Yeah, maybe if we give you all that presentation here, who wasn't there, we can maybe help, because your meetings are streamed, are they streamed?
Yes, they are.
So maybe that would help get that information out, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Do you think it would be helpful to send something in writing similarly, to talk about those different roadways to the other residents a little bit further out than the 500 feet? Because, because I think that those are the folks that deep in there are, might be, that just might be a good PR move.
Sure, I can tell you, in this area, if you look at the map, a lot of that's under development as well. So the area to the immediate west of this property, there's a development called Whaley Platt that's also been pre-planned. It's actually probably going to be coming into the city pretty soon as well. That Edgewater property that you all helped us with on the annexation, there's a whole piece of that that goes further west that will be coming in, probably in the next couple of years. So a lot of that is already kind of being aggregated and, and developed. But we can certainly figure out ways to make sure that folks who live further, maybe towards the lake, would get the information. Maybe if you had some suggestions, we'd be glad to.
I'll ask them on, on Thursday, when I deliver Meals on Wheels on Barber. We'll see what they say.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'd be glad to do our best to try to communicate that to as many people as possible.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important, this area, because a lot of the properties there are five to 10, 20 acres. And so when you're talking 500 feet, you're not reaching that many people.
Right, right. I, I can't tell you, they're pretty smart, though. Most of the folks out there know what's going on, but we can do our best to.
But we want them to have good information, because a lot of it is gossip. And that's what elevates people to start, you know, thinking. So when you, when it comes from the horse's mouth and the City Manager's Office, that this is what we are talking about and taking care of and thinking ahead of the game, you, you can maybe mitigate some of that.
Thank you, and I appreciate using that side of the horse.
Thanks.
Can you put notes on the, on UC bill? Everybody reads that bill, or the water bill?
Maybe with a link to the, to the website or something?
We went to the Paula Huckins meeting, right? Transportation, all that?
Transportation update?
Yeah. Wasn't that, I didn't get anything out of it, I'm honest.
Okay.
It was nice, great presentation, but there was nobody in there that was not a person, either an attorney, a builder, or something. It wasn't your contingency.
Yeah, well, I'm,
You've got to get these people.
We're glad to bring it to the more local level. If you guys would like us to come to you, we'd be glad to. The, the Community Development Department did the bulk of that presentation work, so that we'd be glad to bring that to you for one of your next meetings.
It's like Don says, the more we tell them, the better they are from you guys. Instead of this one said this, this one said that, this one attended this.
Yep, absolutely. We'd be glad to, because this is going to be a very hot development market for you all for like the next couple of decades. So we'd be glad to start getting that information out to however you, however you'd like it.
Now it's the time to take care of the town.
Yes, ma'am. Did, did that give you any?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments from either side?
We've already closed that public comment.
I'm sorry?
You've already closed.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, if there's more discussion between the commissioners, otherwise it'd be appropriate for a motion as to each of the items, unless you wish to have further discussion, but the public discussion's been closed.
Okay, here we go. The three items that we're going to vote on, the following.
Madam Chair, yeah, they, you can just, you know, the first case is the ordinance 202353. If there's no further discussion, you can just call for a motion as to that, as to that case.
There is no further discussion. And we are moving on.
You call for a motion, Madam Chairman, from one of your commissioners.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-53, based on the 16 findings within the land development code.
Are we doing the three?
Is there, is there a second? There is a motion and a second in favor of annexation. Unless there's further discussion, Madam Chairman, you would call for a vote.
Okay, no further discussion?
Nope, not for me.
Then call for the vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, the next one would be?
Madam Chair, you say all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, you call for, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye, ask them to vote. The motion is to approve annexation. Ms. Douglas seconded it, Ms. Grigsby made the motion, so now it's ready for the vote from all five commissioners. Either aye, which is in favor of annexation, or nay, which is against it. Call for the vote.
Okay, I am asking the vote from the commissioners.
Just say, all in favor.
Just say all in favor.
All in favor.
There we go.
Say all in favor, say aye.
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 And he nays? You nay for the, Madam Chair? So it's four to one, the motion carries four. You nay for the Madam Chair? So it's four to one, the motion carries four to one approval, okay?
We go to the next one, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Next item.
Next item would be.
Ordinance 2023-54.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-54. Based on the 16 findings of the land development code.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Chair.
Motion?
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Otherwise, call for the vote. If there's no further discussion, Madam Chair, you can call for the vote.
I am calling for the vote.
All in favor, say.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Say aye.
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 All, all say, all, all against, say nay.
Nay.
I'm nay.
So the ayes were Ms. Douglas, Ms. Grigsby, Ms. Lantry. Was in favor, so the motion carries three to two in favor. Mr. Alexander and Ms. Carney oppose. Motion passes three to two. Okay, Madam Chair, you're down to the ordinance 2023-55, item C.
Fifty-six, fifty, fifty-five.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-55. Based on the 16 findings within land development code.
I second.
Second. Motion's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, then you can call for a vote.
Please, I'm calling for a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Say aye.
Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
No.
Passes three to two. Mr. Lantry, Ms. Douglas, Ms. Grigsby in favor. Okay, okay. Madam Chair, you're on to the next page of your agenda, which is, um, item number D, ordinance 2023-43.
Forty, forty-three?
Yes, ma'am, 2023-43.
Okay. I am calling for your vote.
No, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna call the case. Call the case, the city's the applicant, they're gonna make a presentation for you.
Okay, ordinance number 2023-43.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Francine Sutton with Community Development. And the case I'm presenting for you this evening is CPA 230010 for ordinance 2023-43. And this is for the potable water element of the comprehensive plan. And the purpose of this, um, element is to provide potable water service to meet demands within the city's boundaries and within the joint planning area. And to provide delivery and distribution and of potable water to meet fire protection demand within the city and the city's JPA. And then third, to identify and plan for the water supply sources and facilities needed to serve existing and new development within the utility, uh, service area of the city. And just for background, this updated element includes principles, guidelines, and strategies consistent with the Florida State statutes regarding potable water within the city of St. Cloud. The goals, objectives, and policies within this updated element reflect the preservation of potable water for all current and anticipated future residents. The city entered into an interlocal agreement with Toho Water Authority to assume management responsibilities for the city's water utility systems. And this transition occurred in October of 2022. And the 10-year water supply facilities work plan, which was completed in December 2022, the primary objective was to identify and plan for the water supply resources, sources, and facilities needed to serve existing and new development within the city, uh, within the utilities service area of the city. And goal one, which is one of the updated goals of the proposed element, is to coordinate with it, with the Toho Water Authority to plan for and assure an adequate supply of potable quality water to meet the needs of all city residents and non-residential establishments within the city of St. Cloud and within the city's JPA. And the objective one point one that you see before you, it just speaks of a five-year capital improvement plan. And in your, um, memorandum report, you should see a document that shows a strike-through underline of, um, existing with proposed new policies. And then objective one point two, and it just says that based on population projections, the city shall coordinate with Toho as appropriate to assure this apply and treatment of safe potable water through the 2032 planning horizon to meet adopted level of service standards. And then, um, objective one point three, the city shall discourage leapfrog development and urban sprawl. And the objective one point four, the city shall maintain initiatives to conserve potable water resources, which ensures compliance with Toho's level of service standards for potable water. And then goal two, the city shall coordinate with Toho to provide delivery and distribution of potable water to meet fire protection demand within the city and the city's JPA. And objective two point one, the city shall coordinate with Toho to monitor, evaluate, repair, and replace the existing water delivery and distribution system consistent with Toho's CIP to ensure the system can deliver an appropriate fire protection service. And staff recommends approval of ordinance 2023-43. And the requested action from the planning commission is approval of ordinance 2023-43. Thank you.
Could you please define, uh, leapfrog development? That, I'm just, I don't know that I've heard that term before.
Okay. Okay, so leapfrog development, I'm, I'm assuming that's development that occurs like outside of different air. Like contiguous? Yeah, that's my first time seeing the term as well, but to prevent urban sprawl, and that's when you have growth, that's occurring outside of an area that's already developed. And then.
Okay, I, I, that's enough. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
And I am sorry, can you summarize all of that for me a little bit more concisely? Is it going to affect anybody within an area that has a well on their own? Or is this just nothing more than ins, uh, uh, ensuring that, uh, people outside of, I don't even know how I wanna say it, that, 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 that there is just enough water for even just like the, the new annexations and all that we're putting in? That's what this is really all about, right? It doesn't have anything to do with anybody who said, I'm going to have another well and dig that. It has nothing to do with that, correct?
Uh, no, it's just a, um, a statutory requirement to update this potable water element. It's, um, chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and each periodically, the city is required to update that document. And since Toho, um, had that transition of December, this is just updating that to reflect that they would, we will be working with them.
Okay.
It will require any new development within the city limits and the JPA to connect to central potable water systems?
Yes, okay, that's.
But I, I think your question was more about people that already have a well.
Right, it was like, as I was reading it, it was a little confusing to me, cause it brought that up, and I'm thinking, what does that have to do with anything? So now I know that it doesn't really, it's just more of an update of the documents to, to match up, so, okay. I, I'm, I'm clear.
Madam Chair, if there's questions for staff, would be appropriate, otherwise it would be call for public comment?
Any coming from the staff?
Any questions from the commission for the staff as well?
Any questions from the commission to the staff?
I don't have any questions.
No.
Doesn't appear so. Madam Chair, you may call for public comment on this, at this time?
We are calling for.
Public comment?
Public comment.
If any?
If any, please give your name and your address when you come up and fill a little paper out.
I don't believe we have any, Madam Chair. I think you can close the public discussion.
Close it?
Applicants looking for a recommendation of approval on this.
We're closing the floor.
Call for a motion?
Call for a motion.
Madam Chair, call for a motion, there you go.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-43 of, uh, approval of ordinance number, right, I did the right number, 2023-43. Based on the 16 findings within the land development code.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Chair, you can call for a vote?
I'll second, third it.
You can call, call for a vote?
I'll call for a motion.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Five, zero, approved, recommend approval on ordinance 2023-43. Madam Chair, you're on to the next ordinance, uh, item E and F, which I think staff wishes to present, uh, together as we did with the first cases.
With the south and I too.
Yes. Well, good evening again. I'm Francine Sutton with Community Development, and I'm presenting this evening a comprehensive plan amendment, ordinance 2023-56, and a zoning map amendment, ordinance 2023-57, for approximately 30.38 acres of land, more or less. And the location is north of Nova Road, east of Babe Breeze Drive, and south of Shaker Palm Place. And the request is for approval of ordinance number 2023-56, and approval of ordinance number 2023-56, uh, seven, I'm sorry. And staff also recommends approval. So just background for this property, the existing future land use is low-density residential. And the proposed future land use for this property is medium-density residential. And the existing zoning is R1, single-family, and the proposed zoning is R3, multifamily dwelling. And this development is compatible with the surrounding area, and there is no adverse impacts on city facilities. And the future land use map, as you can see here, is the subject property with the current future land use of low-density residential. And then to the north, that pink area you'll see is mixed-use. And then to the south of it, you see other low-density residences in the area, and some MDR to the east. And then for context, this is the zoning map that depicts R1, which is single-family. And you see, um, a combination of different zoning designations surrounding the property, including mixed-use to the north, and some Ag and, um, R1A to the, um, west of it. And here's just a, um, table that depicts the differences between the R1 and R3 zoning debt, um, designations. And as you can see with R1, um, there is a difference in the minimum lot width for a single-family and the minimum site square foot area for a single-family property. And as you can see with R3, the difference is that it allows, um, different product types other than single-family, which includes, um, duplex and a cluster unit, and the widths are different. And, um, the applicant is requesting R3 to do a different product type. And, um, the difference between low-density residential and medium-density residential is the amount of dwelling units per acre. With the existing future land use of low-density residential, um, you get a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. And with medium-density, there's a maximum of 10 dwelling units per acre. So the difference is, under low-density residential, uh, uh, with the net developer of 25 acres, they can get possibly 100 dwelling units. But if they amend the future land use to MDR, they can get potentially 250 dwelling units. But, um, that's not the case when you factor in things like open space. So with open space, you would be required to give, um, at least 20% for, um, residential development. So what that means is, if they, with the current zoning, they would get around 87 single-family lots. But with R3, there's a requirement that requires additional open space than the, um, single-family zoning designation. So that means that they could get roughly around 187 lots if they were to go to, um, R3. And then at, with the 25%, they would be required to have at least, um, 6.25 acres for open space. And with that, um, DRC and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2023-56, which is the, um, comprehensive plan amendment, and approval of ordinance 2023-57, which is the zoning map amendment. And the requested planning commission recommendation is approval of ordinance 2023-56 and approval of ordinance 2023-57. And staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Is there any information, uh, besides just the rezoning and the zoning map amendment? Or the comprehensive plan amendment? In other words, is there any, um, preliminary comprehensive plans for the development that would be here?
So at this time, um, there have not been any supplemental of a, um, site development plan or a preliminary subdivision plan. The request is just to, um, update the future land use to get a higher density than the four dwelling units per acre. And, um, to the north of them is mixed-use, which their maximum density to the north is already 25 dwelling units per acre.
So theoretically, since they're applying for the R3 designation, they would most likely be planning townhomes or apartments?
Possibly, or duplex. They didn't, um, with the application, they didn't say which one, but they could pursue a, um, product type other than single-family. And as you know, in St. Cloud, there's about, I wanna say 80% is single-family, so it'll be the opportunity, if the applicant chooses, to, um, have another product type.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Can you approach the bench and give us your name and address?
Kevin Talbert, and 3212 Decker Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32833, formerly St. Cloud, 5807 Bartlett Drive, when I started this project. And I did bring you guys a product brochure of what we're planning on putting on the properties, which gives you a very good detail.
Thank you, sir.
Forgive me for asking a non pertinent question, and you're welcome not to answer it if you'd like, but why'd you move to Orlando from St. Cloud? Or why'd you move out of St. Cloud?
Traffic.
I will tell you that in the city of St. Cloud, I have put together five neighborhoods in the last three years. And all in the St. Cloud, uh, from Jones Road to Cyril's, Amshur to Narcoosi Range. And I saw it grow dramatically over the last three to four years. And I personally grew up in Okeechobee, in a lot of, a lot of acreage. And I was not a city person, and the more tighter it got, the more uncomfortable I got. So I went out to Wedgefield, Oregon, to make my journey.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wedgefield is, that's out there. That's not what I was envisioning when you said Orlando.
Okay, so you're not planning all multifamily, what are these Dawsons and these are single-family homes?
The developer, the, I'm sorry, the builder that wants to partner with us on this has said that he wants to build mostly townhouses and some mix of single-family homes. They would be similar to the Pulte products that are on, um, Franklin and Leon Tyson area there. They're 24-foot wide products, um, that you can actually get about 3,600 square feet on a two-story, which surprises me even, but, okay, 24 feet wide and 3,600 square feet.
Mr. Talbert, can we, yeah, I was gonna say, we have one place on the overhead for the streaming. Thank you. What the commissioners are reviewing is gonna be shown on the overhead for the public view.
This developer is, um, a very large developer, uh, uh, builder, I'm sorry, I keep saying developer. The, the builder is a very large builder here in the area. They have done multiple projects, uh, in the sense that they like to be friendly with everything that you could think of this particular neighborhood, as far as the young lady mentioned, in, in amenities. They are proposing things like clubhouse, pool, cabana, uh, free space for exercise areas, as well as dog park. So it's not just about building houses, it's actually building neighborhoods friendly for families.
So there's a ver, for a variety of income levels as well, right? Is there commercial retail planned out there?
Uh, we do not have it on our property, no. But as we mentioned just a few minutes ago, there is a brand-new 25-per-acre apartment complex on the corner, less than a mile away. Their latest commercial, I don't know if you wanna call it commercial as far as shopping, but the latest infrastructure is a brand-new school less than a mile away, uh, to be built in 2022. be built in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brand-new school bus facility, as well as new fire station, I believe, is coming as well. And that's why staff said that there was no objections to the infrastructure issues, because we've addressed, our project won't be out of the ground until at least twenty-five mid-year, and the school will already be open by then.
What's the neighboring existing subdivision there? It starts with an L, right?
Lancaster.
Lancaster.
Yes. And we did send out over six hundred and sixty notices, I believe, effectively. One person showed up at our community meeting and said, "Great job, it looks beautiful." That was the whole extent of the meeting, three hours.
Great job.
Yeah, they liked the concept. Six hundred and sixty invitations, one person showed up.
Anybody have any other questions?
Any other questions, the committee? Thank you for your time and your presentation.
Madam Chair, you can call at this time for any public comment.
Any public comment?
Anybody wish to be heard on this matter? If you wish to speak, please come up and state your name and your address on the microphone, and when you've concluded your presentation, there's a form we need you to fill out to turn in to our clerk. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Nathania Garcia, I live at sixteen ninety-five Bay Breeze Drive. First of all, I'd like to say that we are the backyard of this new development that they're trying to build. When we first bought our home there in two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen, they said they weren't gonna touch the reservoirs, that there was gonna be a school built, there was gonna be a bus depot built, but that that was gonna stay farmland. That's what was stated to us. We never got an invitation to the meeting that he's stating that only one person showed up to. We are the community that is right behind it, as you can see on the screen.
In Lancaster, correct?
No, it's Westerly, Estates of Westerly.
Oh, okay.
And we never got an invitation to that meeting. The only invitation that we got is, this is the first notice we've had to this future development that wants to be placed here. We are very worried about traffic. There's gonna be the school built, there's gonna be right in front of the entrance of the community, there's gonna be the bus depot that's already being built, the water reservoirs, they're gonna be filled in, that that could cause property damage to the properties that are right there on Bay Breeze Drive, and that's a big concern to us, and that's what I would like to state.
Is the Bay Breeze Drive you're referring to, it's not the Bay Breeze Drive we're seeing on the map here, it's?
Yeah, it's the Bay Breeze Drive that, right behind it would start where the square is, there's a reservoir there, and that's where they want to start building. So we already have, like, we went through HOA and put our low fences, because there was nothing gonna be built there, so now we have to go back and build new fences, and unless their community is gonna put fences up to divide the communities, and because, I mean, this is the first time we're hearing about this whole ideal thing that they're trying to build. We never got any notification about, just about this meeting today.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
Please state your name and address.
My name is John Melvin, I'm at one-six-six-nine Bay Breeze Drive, St. Cloud. Okay? Again, I'd just like to piggyback on what she said, we was not aware that the development was going on, we did not get that notice, okay? My main thing is, like you said, is the traffic. Right now, Nova Road, if you hit Nova Road on one ninety-two, they're building apartments right there. So you're gonna have all that traffic, okay? Then you got traffic coming into town, we're gonna have the bus depot, we're gonna have the school, more traffic. On Nova, on that Nova Road, speed limit is fifty-five. They do not do fifty-five. Okay? These are eighteen-wheelers, them dirt trucks, they come through there flying. Okay? So have there been a traffic study done?
Yes.
Sir, this is for public comments, you can address your comments to the commission. The applicant will have a chance to respond to your comments.
We'd like to know if there's been a traffic study done? And has this already been approved by the county, or does it have to be approved by the county?
This is, this is, there are two items, there's a comprehensive plan amendment before the commission, sir, and a zoning map amendment. The comprehensive plan amendment, as you know, is, request is to transfer from low-density to medium-density, and in the zoning map, from R one to R three. That, those are the two items before the commission.
Okay.
So this is already in the city limits? It's already in the city limits.
I'm sorry?
It's already within the city limits.
Okay, all right, so it doesn't have to do that, all right. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I have a question for city staff. I just want to know, the list of addresses and residents, is this from the citizen participation meeting that was held on the September twenty-fifth?
I just want to make sure we haven't closed public comment yet, is that's correct? Okay. We were not involved in that community meeting that the applicant referred to, so I was not personally.
This list came from the applicant?
As far as mailers for the comp plan amendment and the zoning map amendment, we're looking really quickly to see how many notices went out.
While they look for that, I just want to mention, the timer is not working, but I am taking a three-minute time on my phone. You haven't heard it go off yet, but you do have three minutes when you speak, okay?
Mr. Lanter, are you referring to the participation meeting report? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's an exhibit that was submitted, I think
Yeah.
by the applicant?
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
That's what I was asking.
That's your question?
Yeah, and when, Dagmarie Segarra, Community Development, when an applicant first starts the process with the city, they do a pre-application meeting. At the pre-application meeting, we encourage the applicant to reach out to the community with a community meeting. It is not a requirement, but we always strongly encourage them to do it. The city's not part of that community meeting, and it's all in the, it is the responsibility of the applicant or developer if he chooses to do one, the mailers, and notifying the community, and conducting the meeting. And then they provide us the evidence if they did indeed hold a community meeting. In this case, they did, they took care of everything, they provided the evidence, but the nominations that the public received was the mandated for your statute requirement for public hearings that the city sent out.
Okay, so the city sent out in addition?
For tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Yes, for tonight's meeting and for city council meeting, which is what statutorily we are required to do, and we have the requirement of five hundred feet buffer. When a developer does their own meeting, they can choose whatever buffer, because they, it's not a requirement from the city.
Dagmarie, it would have been the same thing before, what is the community, Westerly? Westernly? Before that was built, all of the people that lived out there in the agriculture who were concerned about that one, they would have been invited to a meeting and heard all of the concerns about that community too, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And, and just so, point of clarification, when, when a applicant let us know that they're going to do a community meeting, staff makes an effort to go to the meeting, but sometimes we get notified after the fact, and I believe that's what happened in this case.
Understood.
Because technically, it's, it's just a, it's just a courtesy, it's their property, they can do whatever they want with it, but as a courtesy to just answer questions and hopefully waylay comments and things, so it's really, like you say, not required, but it's a courtesy to
Yeah, it's a courtesy.
And it might get missed.
Yeah, this is just to reach out to the community and hear their concerns, and maybe some, you know, address some of those concerns prior to these meetings that we're holding, holding tonight.
Is there a way that you can confirm that the notification did go to the residents that spoke previously?
The list that he provided, those are the notification list that he sent out. That's all the proof.
This list that's in the
But again, that's a moot point, it's a courtesy, and some people might have gotten it, and some people might not.
The city's not involved in that.
Right, it's not our
No, but I'm asking, I'm asking if the, if you have a list that the city sent out, is there a way to
Asking whether the city has confirmation that they've done the proper notices based on statute.
And they did, because clearly there's folks here tonight, so we know that the city did there.
No, we, we do send, we
He's asking whether the city confirmed that they sent out the statutorily required notices within five hundred feet.
For the community meeting?
No, 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 for tonight.
No, no.
For tonight, the city, yes, we did.
Yes, yeah, that's what, that's what he was asking.
Yes, yes, we did.
Madam Chair, there's public comments still to be taken.
Yes.
Apologize.
I think we should finish the public comment before moving into
Please come forward.
Hello, my name is David Pavone, I'm sixteen seventy Bay Breeze Drive. I'm also, didn't receive that, then at the
Can you, can you clarify, are you talking about the applicant's notification, or are you talking about the notification from the city of St. Cloud for this meeting? Sorry, go ahead.
The community meeting in which he said one person showed up? We're the property right there that they're gonna build, and I've never
But you did get a notification from the city for tonight's, okay.
Correct, yes, sir.
That's the only thing, I just needed to clarify, I'm sorry. But go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because he made it known that only one person showed up, but I've never, our community itself, and I'm also on our Facebook, Estates of Westerly, I put a notice out for this meeting as well, and the comment I got back were, nobody else received any information besides tonight's notice. I'm a firefighter for City of Kissimmee, so I know how traffic is and how it works and all that, and Nova Road is not substantial for the amount of traffic that we already have for currently, and the way it is, I mean, they had bus stops in front of our community where the bus used to stop at our community to pick up children, and it's dark, and thankfully they had changed it where the bus now comes into our community to pick up the children, because these cars fly, like my other neighbor just said as well, like sixty-seven miles an hour, and they're flying down this road. And now you're gonna put a school across the street, which is fine, and a school depot, but you're talking about traffic patterns, it's a two-lane road, there's no way that this is gonna, especially if you're trying to put townhomes, you're trying to bunch up as many people, I mean, the reason I picked Nova Road, because I was, used to be, I work in the city, Kissimmee, to get away from it, to get the dark, to get the conscious suburbs, and then now just pack in more houses into, like they said, I understand developments and trying to get the money, and trying to pack as many people into one spot as they can, but I mean, the reason of St. Cloud was to get away from all that. And again, safety-wise, traffic patterns, and it's gonna be really bad. And you guys were saying earlier as well, it's like, they already have an apartment complex coming on the end of one ninety-two and Nova Road, that's already gonna be a, they just had to put a light there recently, was just developed there, and that makes, yeah, so, my point is, I understand the concept of it all, but you're trying to pack in too many people in one spot, especially if you're gonna go townhomes. If it was residential, I mean, I would, it is, I understand we have to grow, but too many people in one spot. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your service. Anybody else from the audience, city?
If there's no more public comment, Madam Chair, you can close the public portion of the meeting, and you can either ask questions of applicant or staff, and/or discuss.
I'd like to ask the staff, if I may, please. Someone made reference to the reservoir being cut off or filled in, and that that was gonna cause a problem. Is there any reservoir or anything there that, that is, could it have just been?
I believe it's a retention pond of sorts, or some sort of
So right now, at this time, staff hasn't received any development applications aside from the zoning change and the future land use change, so at the time when the plans are submitted, that's when the staff will be able to review the, I guess, the proposed layout of this development. But right now, this request is only to change the land use and the zoning, it's not approving any units or anything like that.
Okay. And, and I believe that because of, and we've had this over the years, right, this, the bus, barn, the new bus barn or whatever, and the school and everything, that there was a big transportation study done out there, and I know that there's, that's on the plan as well, so residents just might not be aware of that.
And when they submit for this project, they would still have to do a traffic impact analysis, but right now, they haven't submitted a preliminary subdivision plan at this time.
Any other questions? What?
Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Department, just to clarify, someone asked about the traffic study. The traffic study will be required for the development of this, of this property at the time of the subdivision construction plan.
Yes, she, she did mention that, but I also think that, just so everybody is aware that there, there's a lot more studies that were done out there because of all of that growth, it's not just for that one, that you all have been having people do that.
Yeah, they included Center Lake Ranch, the Pine Groves, yeah.
Any further, Madam Chair? Otherwise, can you just take up for discussion or call for motion?
Any discussions for most?
I just, I mean, I know that that area has, has to grow, because it's the other part of St. Cloud that has been growing, I mean, the same, no offense to the current residents, but there were lots of people worried about that subdivision going in, and everybody's moving to St. Cloud, you know? That's, that's what happens.
Yeah, I think also the difficult choices, you know, that's, for a long time, nobody wanted any multifamily or townhomes or medium-density in St. Cloud, but because we're growing so fast, we do need multiple types of housing at, for different income levels, and I think that's, that's what's
These are primarily townhouses, right?
Yes.
I mean, I know it's not really about that tonight, per se, but
Any other questions, comments?
And when does this go in front of city council? Will this be next month?
Next month.
Next week.
Sorry. Go to the December fourteen
Second Thursday?
Yes.
December fourteenth?
Yes, December the fourteenth.
Call for motion. Any other comments, please?
Call for motion.
Madam Chair, I think you can call for motion, I think. This would be ordinance
Calling a motion to
Twenty twenty-three dash five six, agenda item E.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for comprehensive plan, for the ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifty-six, based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second the motion.
You have a, you have a motion and a second, Madam Chair? Any discussion?
Any discussion? Nope.
Call, call for the vote then, Madam Chair, all in favor, say aye.
Everybody?
All in favor, say aye.
Say all in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chair?
Aye.
Okay, passes five zero, any opposed? Passes five zero.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, call for, call for motion on agenda item F, which is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-seven.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of zoning map, of ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifty-seven, based on the sixteen findings in the Land Development Code.
I'll second it.
I'll third it, second it.
You have a motion and a second, Madam Chair, any discussion?
Any discussion?
Call for, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, team.
We have, um, I'm taking the clerk's position here.
Thank you very much for the city.
We have a meeting scheduled for the nineteenth of December, so I'll say happy.
Thank you to the city staff, I apologize that we have a lot of questions. But we. We do represent the citizens here in St. Cloud, so we want to make sure that we're well-informed and they're well-informed.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
You can't, you're the chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
I'm the chairman.